Mr. Chairman, I'd like to cut you off. Do we have a time limit on this presentation this evening?
Our plan tonight is to end around 10 o'clock.
You might want to share that with that robust gentleman sitting right there.
Sure, sure. We'd like to end between 10 and 10:30. You'll assess, say, 10 and 9, or 10 above 10, 9:50, see how the application is going.
And of course, we don't vote for it.
What robust person would you like me to tell that?
I'm putting it out there for everyone. We'll also take a bathroom break somewhere in the middle.
And the audience has heard that? Wouldn't we like to resolve this by this evening? I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Kennedy.
No problem.
I didn't think they were aware of that, no one's on.
Excellent, excellent interjection. So, Mr. Schreiber, we're back up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. For the record, William Schreiber, Shemmy Schreiber, on behalf of downtown Earth, Mr. DeFalco is my continuation witness. I believe we have two more exhibits that we just left to mark that Mr. DeFalco is going to make reference to. I think he left off at 8:20.
I think, I have 8:21 he's starting at, unless...
Yeah, we're starting at 21, correct.
8:21, okay. So what is 8:21?
That will be, go ahead, Rich.
8:21 is entitled Maps Three: Belmore Existing Land Use Maps with Zoning Maps Prepared by Mazer Consulting, July 2016. And this is contained as page 57 in the 2016 Borough Reexamination Report.
All right, so that was Map Number Three: Existing Conditions Prepared by Mazer Consulting, and it's dated July 20, 2016?
July, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and you know what? Just out of an abundance of portion, let's take 30 seconds. I know you were sworn in, you're still under oath, but those last meeting was in 2018, so let's just swear you in one more time. Just state your name, Rich, for the record.
Richard DeFalco.
Okay, you're testi-
I'm F O L C O.
And you're testifying in your capacity as engineer and planner, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you were previously sworn, and your credentials were previously accepted, but this for the record. You swear and re-swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, until you're done.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. DeFalco, I'm going to, yes, next exhibit. I'm going to ask you to mark the next exhibit.
So what's the number of...
8:22.
8:23 is an enlargement-
8:25. 22, Rich. You said 22.
This one is here way to put up. He's moving on to the next one then.
22.
I'm sorry, the first one, I mean, just marked was 8:21, and the second one is going to be 8:22.
All right.
And what is 8:22?
8:21 is on the board. 8:22 is an enlargement of 8:21, showing the subject property in the northeast corner of the borough. Same map, only made larger. This portion of the map pointing to the northeast corner of the borough is enlarged on 8:22. So it's easier to see.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeFalco, I believe we left off with your planning testimony. I think you had just, no, we'll talk about that later. Well, go ahead, go ahead, talk about your good answer.
So, the exhibit was brought out, of course.
Let's look at that one. Mr. Kennedy, is it going to leave across examination from the opposing attorney?
Yes.
Should we swear him in or wait till... The opposing attorney, should we swear him in or just wait till?
Uh, yeah, well, the attorneys don't get sworn in, which is sort of a, sometimes people find that funny in life, but, uh, yeah, the attorneys don't get sworn in, just the witnesses. So, Mr. Brodsky will ultimately have the ability to cross-examine, basically talk over it all.
So, the reason we prepared 8:21 and 8:22 is just to show the board that we had previously entered 810, which was a tax map of the borough, which we colored yellow for multi-family, purple for single-family, just to show the board that the borough has itself in 2016 prepared a very similar map with the multi-family zone, cross-pass, basically surrounding three sides of the subject property, which is the red triangle on the map, just to confirm that what we had prepared is mirrored by the Borough Dome map.
By the Borough Engineer of 2016.
Correct.
Mazer. Okay, Mr. DeFalco, can I ask you to resume your conclusion of your testimony testimony?
Right, so, the project will preserve the character of the community, encourage economic development, protect and preserve the established residential character, provide a broad range of housing choices, and improve the quality of life for Belmore residences. In addition, the proposed project will advance the objectives that complement the stated goals of the master plan in a variety of ways. Specifically, the project will enhance neighborhood aesthetics, promote stable neighborhoods, increase community pride, eliminate substandard properties, provide adequate parking, incorporate parking design into the project, ensure neighborhood compatibility, and maintain consistency with existing land use patterns. The site presently contains a non-conforming use, and the goal of the master plan is to remove non-conforming uses. The site currently has 34 units, and this less intense six-proposed unit project can be adequately and appropriately handled onsite with onsite parking provided. This is not a new use for the site, as the use of the site as a multi-family site has existed for approximately 100 years. The master plan goal is to provide suitable housing for all income, age, and lifestyles. This project is a different housing type that will serve various household types. Similar buildings of this type have been successfully developed in other areas of the borough, specifically the Seaport Village redevelopment area, with similar setbacks, heights, and densities, which have not impaired the goals of the master plan, but rather have provided revitalization to the neighborhood with new modern construction. The proposed building is properly elevated to address any future concerns regarding flooding. The proposed project will be in full compliance with the ADA regulations and include reconstruction of all sidewalks, walkways within the project limits, and include elevators. In conclusion, the improvements will not substantially impair the zone plan as proposal is commensurate with the developments proposed within other areas of community redevelopment. The nature of the neighborhood the property is in, noting the majority of structure for the neighborhood are multi-family. Relief should be granted where there is a land use influence in the immediate area. The lot presently had a non-conforming family use, a 34-unit winging house hotel versus our six-unit proposal. Our desire to build a project so as not to disrupt the character of the neighborhood requesting a five-foot yard setback along River Avenue across from the Borough Park, and increasing a zero-foot yard setback along the Westley property line, which provides five and a half feet, while maintaining the existing adjacent building setback on Second Avenue at 19.17 feet. The renderings of the proposed instruction as presented by Mary Hearn demonstrate the applicant's desire to build a home in a manner that will not disrupt the overall look of the neighborhood. The reason we presented the rendering is because we want to show that the applicant is sensitive to the character of the neighborhood. The proposal is not out of character with surrounding properties and will not injure the value of surrounding properties. There is a range of building styles and setbacks in the area, but no uniform architectural theme that would be impacted by the proposal. The project is a reasonable addition to the neighborhood and is not detrimental to the zone plan. This site and location is particularly suited to redevelopment with a multi-family residential structure and multi-family use as it removes an existing non-conforming hotel use and structure. For the plenty of reasons enumerated above in my previous testimony, it is my professional opinion that the proposed redevelopment of the White House with a six-unit residential project will be a more appropriate use of the site and will be advantageous to neighboring properties and the Borough as a whole.
That's all I have, Mr. DeFalco.
Rich, could I at the very beginning of your hearing, if you could just repeat three sentences that you said?
Go ahead.
It said, at the very, very beginning, you were saying, enhance neighborhood scheme, eliminate substandard properties. What were the things you said before that? I was too busy writing. You, and a whole list of, you said, maintaining existing land use patterns, and you can find that. It was literally the first thing that you said.
Encourage economic development?
Yeah.
That's where you started.
Preserve the character of the community.
Yeah.
Encourage economic development, protect and preserve the established residential character, provide a broad range of housing choices, improve the quality of life for Belmore residents.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so, that's finished, and thank you. Mr. Brodsky, did you want to cross-examine?
I did, I have a few questions for Mr. DeFalco.
And if you need a seat or anything, just tell us and we can make arrangements for you.
I'm probably standing, feel energetic so far, let's see how it goes. So, now, just for the record, just as a reminder, Mr. DeFalco has testified...
It's not an amplifier, it's just a recorder.
I'll speak loudly. So, Mr. DeFalco is testifying both as the engineer and as the planner for the applicant. And I thought that, since it's fresh in everyone's mind, why don't we just, why don't I just ask Mr. DeFalco a few questions about what he just testified to? And I'll go back to some of his testimony from the prior meeting. So, Mr. DeFalco, good evening, how are you doing?
Good.
I just want to make sure I'm clear and I'm following that your testimony with regard to the 8:21 and 8:22 and the master plan. Now, you, of course, reviewed the master plan in preparation for your testimony, you referred to it last time, and you also referred to it this evening as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, my first question is, this master plan was done in 2016, correct?
The study was done in 2016, no?
Okay. And were, as a result of the study, and this study was reviewed by the governing body, correct?
Correct.
Okay. As a result of the study, did the governing body change the zoning for this property that forms the subject matter of this application?
They did not.
Okay. So, with all of this information, and all of the colors and maps and so forth that you've provided for us, which is, which is very helpful, that was all before the mayor and council in 2016, yet the zoning for the subject property in this R-75 zone remained as it is today, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that all of the zoning requirements that pertain to this property, that govern what can be developed on the property and what's before the board in its analysis, remain intact and full force and effect, right?
Subject to the board's approval.
Subject to the board's approval. So, and if, and if the application, as submitted, doesn't comply with that zoning, variance relief is required.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here. And so, so all of the variances that are required in connection with the application, and, I mean, you know, the number of units, floor area ratio, setbacks, height, coverage, all of those are all still variances that are required, notwithstanding the 2016 reexamination report, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, you mentioned earlier, or just a few minutes ago, actually, that, that what is proposed as part of this application is a more appropriate use. And maybe I missed it, and I apologize if I did, but what was your testimony? More appropriate than what?
Than a hotel.
Than the structure that exists at the property today?
That's correct.
And is that building remaining, or is it being, is the proposal that it be removed?
What's your question?
My question is, is the existing structure located on this site as part of the applicant's proposal, is that going to be torn down?
Yes. I'm assuming that's why we're here.
Well, we're here to build something in its place, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, pursuant to the municipal land use law and zoning law in New Jersey, once that building is removed, what happens to all of those grandfathered pre-existing non-conformities? Let me ask you as a planner.
They are not intact at that point.
Okay. So that in effect, the applicant starts with a clean slate?
Well, the applicant, we're not demolishing the building until the approval is printed, so yes and no. We will not solve with a clean slate, so what's their, is that a comparison to what he proposed?
So are you suggesting, and I was just trying to follow, are you suggesting that the applicant gets the benefit of those pre-existing non-conformities as part of this application?
No, but they're used to advise the board as to what is existing, how it compares to what is existing versus what's proposed, so the board can make an informed decision as to would it make sense to keep the hotel or not to keep the hotel.
And in your opinion, your, it's your testimony that the six units that are proposed are a more appropriate use than the existing use?
Yes.
And would, would your, what would your testimony be? Let's strike that. If the application proposed five units, that is five times what's permitted in the zone, would that be a more appropriate use than the existing use?
From whose view?
Well, you're, I'm asking you as the planner for the applicant.
The applicant's view, no, there would be nothing more appropriate. Six is the number that works, and that's what is proposed. If it were five, the applicant would have shown five.
Well...
And you went to Mary Hearn, and you said the same thing. Well, what if four? What if three? What if two? What if one? So, not going there, I'm saying, six is what's proposed, that's what the applicant feels is adequate, that's what the testimony shows is adequate versus the 34 units that's there today.
But, I'm not asking the applicant, I'm asking you as the professional planner who's opining to the board.
Right.
I'm trying to figure out what the magic number, what the magic nature of six is from a planning perspective. Can you, and if you can't answer it, you can't answer it.
I can answer.
Let me finish. Can you answer, as of a planning perspective, would six, the six units proposed here be a more appropriate use than the existing structure? You said yes. I'm asking, what about five units?
I'm saying that six is appropriate because the site can handle six. It has adequate parking and drainage, and it has better setback, and it has better aesthetics, and six is the appropriate use for the site.
Better than five?
Better than any number. Six is the right number.
Better than any number? And you're saying, it's your, your, give it your professional planning opinion that six units on this site is a more appropriate use than even the single, a single-family residential unit which is permitted under the zone?
It's a more appropriate use for the applicant because six units makes the project happen, and it's, it's a, in my opinion, the existing building there is detrimental to the borough, and the way to eliminate it is to improve it with a redevelopment project, which, as the applicant stated previously, six is the number.
Right.
I agree with the applicant.
Okay, and the applicant testified that that six number, do you recall where that six number came from?
Specifically, I don't have that.
All right, so I'll just, I'll just remind you that the applicant testified that the six units were driven by the fact that the current owner of the property needed a certain number in order to sell the property. Do you recall that?
Yes, sir.
I was saying, financial, no?
Financial, financial. And so, I understand that the applicant, the more units, the better, from the applicant's perspective, from the owner's perspective, from a financial perspective, I get that. But what I'm trying to get from you is your professional opinion as a planner as to why six units, not because the applicant wants it, I'm saying, from a planning perspective, why are six units better than less units? And specifically, less than the single unit that's permitted in the zone? Why is that better, from a planning perspective?
Well, we could have got eight units, we would have had a problem with parking, so we chose six units because that's the maximum to fill the site and provide adequate space and services for the site and onsite parking, which the current site does not have. So, we're focused on six units because we did a layout that provides adequate space, light, air, and parking utilities for six units that can fit. And obviously, one can fit as easily as six, but to improve the character of the neighborhood, it's my opinion that six is the right number.
Well, I know you said six is the right number. What I'm asking you, and if you don't know the answer, that's fine, what I'm asking you from a planning perspective, and, you know, this is going to take a long time, if you don't answer my question. My question is, can you give us all the benefit of your professional opinion as to, from a planning perspective, as to why six units is better than the one unit that's permitted? Six units that's not permitted is better than the one unit that is permitted?
Well, one of the reasons why we have this project is the master plan, I'm sorry, the Municipal Land Use Act, one of the goals is to provide a plan which, which is innovative and can be supported by the infrastructure and serves the community, and six units does that. It also provides adequate air and light and open space.
Can I stop you there?
Okay.
Would five units do that?
As I said before, you can go through the five, there's four to work, there's three work, there's all work.
I just wanted to answer to any of them. Pick a number, less than six, tell me why six is better than any of that.
They all could be built. No, it's not too bad, they all could be built.
Okay. Let me ask you this way, because I'm having a problem.
Maybe Ken could get it as well.
I understand you may not want to answer the question, I'm having a little, but that's okay. Let me try and do it another way. From a planner's perspective, the six units that are proposed require a lot of variances, am I correct?
No.
No? Okay. Let's go through them then. So, the six units that are required, that are proposed, okay, so we need the D variance, right, to permit six units where only one is permitted, that's a D use variance, right?
That's one.
That's one. We have a height variance for each of the two buildings, right? Both as to linear feet as well as number of stories, right?
No, the feet we create can reduce the height, so...
To comply with the 35? I don't think so.
Well, it's still a variance, you're right.
Okay. So it's a variance for the height of the one building, right? What are you proposing?
Building height is a variance for the site.
Right.
One is one lot, and it's one variance for height.
Well, we have two buildings, right?
Because the map gave 100 buildings, it's one variance for height. You don't have...
Is one of the buildings going to comply with, with the height?
The height of the building is a variance.
Right. And what about the number of stories? You're proposing three and a half, right? Two and a half is, is what's permitted.
I'm proposing three and a half to garage underneath for the first floor.
Now, what about building coverage? You're proposing 52.4 percent. 20 percent is permitted in the zone, right?
That's correct, 52.4 percent is proposed.
20 percent is permitted.
That's correct.
Okay. Lot coverage, you're proposing 60.2 percent. 40 percent permitted, correct?
60 percent, 40 percent permitted, correct.
Okay. 50 percent more than what's permitted. Lot, I'm sorry, SAR, floor area ratio, we need a variance on that too, right?
We do.
And that, that, SAR, you're, the application proposes about 117 percent, where 50 percent is permitted. All right. Now, on the setbacks, for the front setback, for the actual structure, right, you're proposing a 5 percent setback, 20, a five-foot setback, I'm sorry, 20 feet is required, right?
Yes.
And for the porch, you also, on the one side, it's supposed to be five feet off, you're proposing, it's supposed to be 12 feet off, you're proposing five feet. It's another there, right? Important one, the rear setback. Can I just, can I borrow, do you, can you, can we just put up the, the site plans, just show them the site plans?
So right now, you're at seven variances, correct? Getting ready to talk about eight?
Yeah. Number them, yeah, but I'll, I'll try, right? Sounds right?
Right.
Here we go. And then we have the rear setback, correct? We have the rear setback variance, which is the one that is immediately adjacent to my clients, right here, and so...
Mr. Chairman, I, I have to speak. Kevin, I'd like, much of what we're talking about here has already been reviewed, and it's just summary that's going on, and I really would like to try to move forward. We, we're familiar with the variances that's been covered, and why are we going through them, one...
Well, because I'm trying to get, I'm sorry to interrupt.
But, but we're, we know the variances, they've been reviewed with us already, so you're resummarizing something you already know, so...
Well, I'm forwarding, there's no matter.
I, I, I'm trying, I mean, I tried for ten minutes to ask a question, just trying to get an answer. But the resumery of the variances to Mr. DeFalco, it would no use, we know what the variance is.
Okay, but Mr.-
Have you read it, Mr. Kennedy?
It looks like the point was made, so we can go on.
Okay. So we just had a little difference of opinion as to whether there were a lot of variances associated with the application. I think there are a lot, and I think they're significant.
I'm going to object, Mr. Kennedy, to the speaking cross-examination. It's not stand-up and give Mr. Brodsky on planning, this is cross-examination of DeFalco on planning, and I've remained silent, tried to only give him as much leeway as possible as a gentleman, but I think the speaking question versus direct question is inappropriate, I think questions should be...
All right, so now, you said, we're going to come on.
Okay. Would, would, sorry, Mr. Fowler, I didn't finish my list, but we were getting here. So, my question then, which was I trying to move up to, sorry if I took too long, I'm just trying to get an answer. Would there be a more compliant plan if you had less units on a proposed as part of this application? Number and/or extent of the variances.
The testimony I had previously provided stated us referring to a case known as Price versus Hume Jay, and unit city board of adjustment. In that case, the use of the property subsumed all these many, many, many bulk variances you were referring to. The use is what the board is looking at. It's obvious that if you build a multi-family house in a R-75 or R-50 or R-40 zone, the bulk standards will not apply to a different use, and our position is that the use proposed for six units is what the board's approving. All those bulk variances go away if they like the project. We're not trying to make a certain height, we're not trying to make a certain setback. We have a plan, but, as you can see, better, we call it a rear setback, we still know it as a side setback. Right now, the building's on the, on the zero line, we are five feet away. We have a plan ahead of the use, and the plan in its entirety shouldn't be compared to an R-75 zone. for a five-foot setback, or a 20-foot court setback, we're here for a use, and the building is proposed as it's been drawn, and as it's been laid out. If the board likes the onsite parking, the 80-foot wide driveway, and the two buildings that look like two single-family structures from the street, as their elevation show, that's what they're going to vote on, not what we have six variances, or 10 variances, 11 variances, it's the use that's driving the project here, not the bulk chart.
I agree the use is, is driving the project, and I agree you're not proposing a single-family home, which is what is permitted in the zone, but are, is it your testimony then, that none of the bulk variances, none of the bulk requirements for the R75 zone are relevant?
They're all relevant, and that's why we increased the setback to the west, from zero to five, and that's why we have the onsite stormwater to mitigate any precarious variance from the R75 zone. And that's why we lowered the height, so that we're, in comparison to other structures in the neighborhood, so we are very aware of the chart, and of the borough's needs, and of the variances.
So, the variances are relevant, and you still need relief for them?
We need relief regardless, that's what the zone requires.
Okay, that's all, all right. And so, my question is, if you had a smaller project, wouldn't you need less variance relief? Yes or no?
Smaller room for us, for what?
Number of units, let's start with that.
I can have one unit the size of this, and we'd need the same amount of variance.
How about if you propose, if your, if your application did not propose an FAR of 117 percent, where 50 percent is required, would that be a more compliant plan?
In an R75 zone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are in the R75 zone.
I understand.
Okay, and so, and I think the applicant's architect testified that indeed, if you built a smaller building, if you built only one building, if you built less units, you would have a more compliant plan, because you would need less variances, is that correct? Do you, do you agree with the architect's testimony?
If you're assuming that the property is vacant, and we're starting with a clean slate like you said, if we have an existing problem on the site with a non-performing structure with 34 units, then maybe not, we're comparing apples and apples, not apples and oranges.
Oh, right.
It's not an R75 zone clean slate, we're taking down something that is not zoned for, and putting up a use that is more compatible with the neighborhood.
So, then, I'm, I'm struggling here, I'm trying to follow. Are you suggesting that you somehow, that an applicant somehow gets relief from complying with the zoning criteria that is binding on the site, based on what used to be there?
Not at all.
Okay, so you still have to respond. Okay, let me just ask you, and just one other question on this area, because I, I can't seem to get an answer. If, under the master plan that you talked about, the re-imagination report, you talked about some sort of general sort of goals of the master plan, which are all good, and one of the things that the master plan said, which I'm sure, sure you saw when you reviewed it, that it talked about the, the goal of density, right? And for a property such as this, in the R75 zone, talked about a goal, a, a, a density goal of 5.8 units per acre, did you see that?
I see it.
Okay. What's the density that's proposed as part of this application?
I believe it's 18.
Okay, so, you're proposing over three times the density, which is not a variance, but it's just something that, when you agree, is inconsistent with that goal of the master plan?
I think it is consistent, because right now, there's 99 units per acre, and 18 is a lot less, so we are eliminating a 99 per unit per acre project, or an 18 per acre project, and that's in performance with the, that could involve the more performance with the neighborhood scheme, which has, as these exhibits show, 822, 821, we're surrounded by multifamily houses, the R75 is the exception, not the norm. That red triangle is surrounded by many, many, many condominiums and apartments.
Yet notwithstanding that, the council kept the R75 though.
That's correct.
Right? Okay, and I'll try one last time, based on your review of the master plan, is it your opinion that the proposed six units for this site are more consistent with the master plan's goals and objectives than the single unit residential that is permitted in there?
Well, I think I expressed my opinion before.
Which was what?
One house would have less impact than six.
Okay. All right, let me just see if I can go back to, and you referenced the C4 development, that's not, this property, this property's not located in that, right?
No, it doesn't even have an FAR, it has parking inside.
Would your testimony change, just as an aside, would your testimony change if you were to be told that the White House, what you're calling the hotel, was not going to reopen, regardless of the result of this application?
I'm going to object to the form of question one, it's speculative, it's really not part of the application. It could burn down, and if it burned down, then you have a blank slate, but there's all kinds of assumptions we can make, and it's not a fair question to Mr. DeFalco, an operating entity, and the four corners of this application is to rid that application and replace it with the proposed application.
I withdraw the question. Mr. DeFalco, I'm just going to step back to some of your testimony from the prior hearing. You provided the engineering plan, right, that had been submitted before, to the board as part of the application.
That's great.
Okay, now, did you have input in that role, in the design of the site?
Yes.
And what was that input?
It was where, in the driveway, where's the parking, and to some extent, where a building is located.
Did you have any input into the number of units?
Yes, we were figuring the parking that would be available, and the number of units was provided to support the parking.
Okay, and I don't think I got to the parking variance when, when I was going through the variances, but you do, the applicant does need a variance for parking, right, as proposed?
It's really up to the borough's interpretation of the RSIS. The RSIS calls for two spaces per unit, and then, when you have a larger federal county goes, I think 2.3 per unit, so our onsite calculation says we need 14 parking spaces per unit. But as you read, the RSIS requirements, that 14 spaces per unit includes a half space per unit as a guest visiting requirement, so our six units have three guest parking spaces in that 14. The residents themselves need 11 spaces, the guests need three spaces. And in many towns along the shore, the three months, or two months of the year where you have a shortage of parking, they're taking into account that nine months of the year, you have plenty of parking. So, the 40-some-odd spaces on River Avenue directly at our site, we felt would be adequate for the three guest spots, leaving 11 required spaces, and we provide 12 onsite spaces. So, it depends how you interpret the RSIS, you just look at the number 14 versus 12, we need a variance. If you look at the RSIS number, we need 11 onsite, and three guest spaces on or off-site, because RSIS allows off-site spaces as part of the project, and time of the year, and we know what happens during the warm months, so it's not a black and white answer, but we do need a variance based on just 14 versus 12.
Okay, so 14 parking spaces are required, you're providing 12, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, would there be less parking required if there were less units?
It depends on how many bedrooms you have, so the answer's no.
No. Would there be less parking required if you had a single-family residential home that's permitted pursuant to the zoning? There'd be less, the lower parking required.
There would be less if you had one house, yes.
Okay, would there be less if you had two units?
And if you had no units, it'd be less, too.
Okay, now, you testified also about drainage on your direct testimony.
I did, yes.
And does lot coverage or building coverage have anything to do with drainage?
It's all related, the more you cover, the more you have a runoff from a rainfall event.
Okay. You also talked about the site being particularly suited for six units, is that correct?
I believe I did that, yes.
Okay. And can you give me the, your, the basis, from a planner's perspective, as to why the site is particularly suited for six units, as opposed to the one that's permitted?
Or, as I said before, when you look at the intensity of use, one of the goals is to show that the site can support the proposed use, if the site could not support the onsite stormwater, or the onsite parking, then it would be an issue as to your preference. But the use is being proposed that fits the site, and that is the criteria we use. And again, one unit would have less impact, I agree, but the site can handle six, and is specifically suitable for that, because it can hold six.
So, is it your testimony then, as a planner, that particular suitability is based on the maximum density that a site can, in your words, handle? Is that how you define particular suitability?
I didn't say that.
No, tell me what you said.
The character of the neighborhood, the neighborhood is a multifamily neighborhood, so the site gets into the character of the neighborhood, it's suited for the neighborhood, it's suited because it's near the ocean, it's suited because it has mass transit in the borough, and it isn't quite suited to be six units.
Well, what, what, would you have the same opinion as its particular, as to its particular suitability, if the application proposed five units? Or would it not be particularly suited for five, only six?
If you look at the picture as a whole, it's particularly suited for six, so that the hotel can be demolished. If you're saying it should be one, then you can still see the hotel. So, in my opinion, it's suited as a redevelopment project for six units, with a large enough property to handle six units, within a borough that has a community around it of multifamily zoning, that is similar to the proposed use. Excuse me, not to cut you off, counsel, Mr. Kennedy, when do we go from here?
We're going to let Mr. Brodsky finish his cross-examination, and then, we will ask Mr. Middleton as the, if he has any cross-examination, and then we'll go to Mr. Schiper's next witness, if he has one.
Do you have one?
I have an appraiser, and he will be my last witness, other than calling members of the public.
Thanks, sorry to interrupt, just watching off time.
I would like to, also my comment, I think the board completely understands the six, five, four, three, two, one argument that's been made about six times right now, so to continue to go down that road is, is, we understand your point, and we understand the testimony, I don't know how many times we have to go through that again, before it starts again, too late, and it's time to divide, it sounds like a filibuster happening right now.
Maybe I could jump in and ask Mr. Kennedy to just give us a brief outline of why this presentation and cross-examination is happening, and has to play out, as I understand it, as tedious as it is, we're here to listen, and, and weigh everything that the applicant's want to go through.
But at the risk of redundancy.
So, here, here's, here's the situation, so it, it's, I read something in one of the cases, it said, democracy is not always fun, but, the reality of it is, and I think we have to be very cognizant of the fact that there are a lot of people with suits in this room, there's a lot of attorneys, and I think what we have to be very cognizant of is that, whatever decision this board makes, there is a possibility, and I would say a strong possibility, that there could be litigation, I hope there's not, but there is a strong possibility, and if there is litigation, a judge is going to rule on whether your decision, whether your decision is approving it, or denying it, the judge is going to have to determine whether or not your decision was arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. And the judge is supposed to give great leadway, and great support for your belief, and your determination, because you all are the ambassadors of the town, you are all out of your boots on the ground in this town, you all know what is, is good for this town, what is appropriate for this town, and the law says that the judge is not supposed to disrupt your opinion, provided it's not arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable. And one of the standards towards that is going to be, did everyone get their opportunity to speak, did everyone get to say what they want to say, ask the questions that they wanted to say, and I understand the timing sensitivities. However, I think, and I say this respectfully, is that if you don't let the people speak within reason, that that person, if that side does not win this case, they are going to go to court, and they're going to say, "Your Honor, the board shut me down, the board attorney shut me down. Had I had an opportunity to speak, I would have rocked this board's world, I would have told them things that would have made them think about life differently, I would have made them think about this application differently, and had they let me say this, I would have have done that." Because they didn't, they, they screwed up, and they didn't hear the whole testimony. So, that is why we have to be super, super sensitive to let everyone speak within reason.
So, at what point do you feel that the address is becoming repetitive? That you might speak in representing the board here, and say, "We've heard this enough times"?
I, I don't think we're there yet, I, but I think the point is, is that, you know, the point's been made, and, and there's no need to hit anyone over the head with a point, I think we're able to point, and I think it's a, it's a lesson for everybody, that let's hopefully make our point, and, and again, sometimes, you know, lawyers have to try to envision everything, so it's not an easy position for Mr. Brodsky, and Mr. Schipers, and Mr. Middleton to be in. I've been in those positions, much easier for me as the board attorney, although sometimes we have to make, make these changes, so I, I think, I, I'm, I understand what you're all saying.
Kevin's being modest, he's pretty good, too, I've seen him represent.
And we apologize for interrupting you, but we're just trying to.
I understand the sensitivities, but we sort of have to let this process unfold as sometimes, you know, and again, in the other thing, before I turn it back over, in this land use arena, formal rules of evidence don't apply. So it's not like this is a murder trial, where you have to have those standard rules. But the basic rules apply relevancy, avoiding repetitiveness, avoiding hearsay, and all things like that. So I think, let's just say, we're sensitive, and let's make a note, all the witnesses, make your points, make them quickly, make them wonderfully, and let's move on.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, can we count on you, then, as our attorney, to let us know when you hear unreasonable, unquestionable?
Sure, and by all means, you all can ask that, too, but I think that, you know, everyone in the room is hearing the question, the cows, and the concerns, so we're good. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll let this play out, thank you for asking.
Finish up, as quickly as I can. I just want to go into the special reasons that the planner testified to in support of the, our list of variances here, both the D variances and the C variances. So during your testimony, Mr. DeFalco, on the planning end, you testified as to a number of special reasons, right, which is the requirement under the land use law to be proven in order to justify the granting of the variance. The first one you testified to about was fire safety as a special reason, special reason B, fire safety. And, is that correct?
That wasn't the first reason, but go ahead, the one that you.
Okay. I don't care what order you want to go in.
No, he said first, I'm just trying to correct.
Okay, it was first and later, maybe I missed one. Fire safety. So can you explain how the proposed six units benefit fire safety more than one or two units?
A fire doesn't know how many units are burning, all right? So a fire is combustible material. Right now, this is zero-foot setback to a combustible surface at the Westman property line, and we're proposing a five-and-a-half-foot setback, which is further from the line. It will be built on materials that are cartily rated, and will be materials and techniques under new construction code that are a better situation than existed there.
What's the, now, you raised that, and I gotta ask you this. What's the distance, the linear distance, of the existing building that you say is located along the property line?
Distance from where to where?
The distance side to side of the building. How many feet of the building is sitting on the property line?
I have to measure it.
And what's the distance, same measurement, for the newly proposed building?
Approximately ninety feet.
Okay. So ninety feet, you're saying, is five feet off the property line, whereas sixty-six is on the property line as it exists today. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Five-and-a-half feet.
Five-and-a-half, sorry. When you, the other special reason that you referenced in your testimony was the provision of adequate light air and open space, correct?
Yes.
And can you explain your opinion that the proposed development better supports adequate light air and open space than the single-family use that's permitted?
Statement was that the proposed project has adequate light air and open space, provides adequate light air and open space. And again, going back to, is one less impact? Yes, one unit would have less impact, and we have more airways and open space. But we're here for, we're here for a nice variance for six-unit condominium.
Well, you said that before, but we've also got.
It has adequate light air and open space.
And the variance is ever associated, right? You also referenced special reason E under the municipal land use law, talking about appropriate population densities, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And can you explain to us, for the record, your opinion that six units that are proposed here is more appropriate population density under the municipal land use law than the single unit that's permitted?
The six units are better than the thirty-four units that are existing. We're here for use variance to eliminate the hotel and build six units. I'm not here to build one unit.
Just add to the negative criteria, real brief, real brief.
Do we have the drawing of the six units? Is it in here somewhere?
Yes.
It's laying right there. Can we put that up anywhere so people can see what we're talking about?
The elevation?
Yeah, exactly. That one.
I think the other one.
Just so that you know aesthetically how pretty this building is.
Beautiful.
Yes, beautiful. They should see.
Yeah. Now, these, of course, don't show the neighboring properties, so, and.
And Rick just referred to what you referred to.
Yeah, I don't know, what is this called, this?
I mean, identify it. Rick, what is Rick Brodsky looking at quicker?
I'm wondering if the exhibit was just what?
Okay.
I don't know if it was marked, because it's just the site plan itself.
Marked for me to keep up.
A five.
I believe it's A five.
Thank you. So A five shows where these beautiful buildings are being situated on the site, and when you talked about negative criteria, you opined that there would be no negative impact on neighboring property owners, including the two property owners here who are my clients. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that is your opinion, there's no negative impact in having these six units, two buildings, being developed within five feet of that common property.
I'm gonna object to the form of the question. I think when Mr. DeFalco testified, he thought it was substantial detriment in regard to negative impact.
Okay.
I think we're just saying, is there any impact upon one lot or two lots in a neighborhood versus substantial detriment to the borough?
So it's, there's no substantial detriment?
So we're comparing apples and apples, it's maybe using the right comparison language.
Is it a benefit to my client's properties?
I believe so, as you personally testified to.
Right. And in this area, these squares here, I think we had prior testimony here that these eight air conditioning units, they're proposed there along that property line, correct?
Those are the new state of the art, low noise air conditioning units behind the fence, correct.
So my clients won't hear them?
Probably not over the pool filters, no.
And that, in your opinion, is the best place along the property line for the eight units?
Yes, it's a tough place.
Okay. And then, there are also doors in these units, in the rear of these units?
I believe there's doors.
Okay.
Very far with this.
Got it.
And a walkway. Gates, you get through the fence?
Doors into the units, rear doors.
I believe there are rear doors.
Rear doors to go into here.
Oh, into the six units?
Yeah, you have to go into here, into the four units.
Oh, okay.
Along this, in this five-and-a-half-foot walkway area to enter the units.
No, that's not true. That's not true.
I thought there was a rear door.
It was a process.
Yep. Is the, is the application, strike that. My last question. As a planner, would you opine that an application for the permitted single-family residential would be a better planning alternative than was proposed as part of this, in conjunction with this application? Sir, what was your question? My question is, as a professional planner, would it be his opinion that a single-family residential home proposed for this site would be a better planning alternative than the six units that are proposed? Is this simple, yes or no?
It would be simple.
Okay, just a yes or no?
The answer is that without the six units, the hotel, which is not in accordance with the zoning, would remain, and it would not be a better plan, it would be a worse plan than the one.
Worse plan. One unit would be worse than six. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and now we're up to Mr. Middleton.
Yeah, Mr. Middleton, do you have any questions?
I think I have. Ben, you want?
Mr. DeFalco, as I sat back in the audience and listened, I was somewhat confused as to the questions and the choices. And as I understand it, the binary choice here, from your perspective, is whether or not we're gonna be living with a thirty-four-room rooming house, you blew a hotel, my place, please, a rooming house, as opposed to six new condominiums.
That's correct.
That's correct. So from your viewpoint as a planner, that's the choice, A or B, not A, the rooming house, and B, the bacon piece of property.
That's correct.
Correct? And from your viewpoint as a planner, would you anticipate that this thirty-four-room rooming house, which has been here for eighty years, is gonna wither away and die in the vine?
Unstoppable.
Correct. So again, the choice is rooming house or six new condominiums. Correct?
That's correct.
And I believe your testimony is, in order for the applicant to economically move forward and buy the rooming house, raise the rooming house, and then have the opportunity to construct the townhomes, they would deem to construct at least six townhomes. Correct? That's your understanding?
That's my understanding, yes.
And if they were only permitted to construct five, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible, and the borough and the local community would be left with this thirty-four-room rooming house, correct?
You're saying financially prudent if you did five and less of six?
I believe, I believe the testimony has been from this attorney and from this planner that five would not be economically feasible. Is that correct?
To the applicant.
Correct.
Okay. Let's make sure we got clarity, is that correct?
I should have taken some breaks. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So in totality, then, your testimony is, you believe as a planner, it's preferable to get rid of the rooming house and permit the six townhouses.
That's correct.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Mr. Brodsky, let's come back up.
I'm sorry, one question, one question. So then, Mr. DeFalco, just following up on Mr. Middleton's question and your testimony, just to be so I'm clear, is it your testimony that the economic feasibility of the project is relevant to the granting or denial of the variance from the municipal land use law and planning procedure?
The board has to decide whether they want the white house to remain, or whether they want six condominiums under this application. It's as simple as that.
Well, you just told me nothing is simple, and so, which is why I didn't ask you.
It's not a question, nothing is simple. I think he's speaking, we're getting Brodsky, I'm speaking, I'm planning versus questions.
No, no, he's the planner. He's the planner, I'll withdraw whatever it is I said. So, but Mr. DeFalco, then, Mr. Middleton also asked you as to whether there are only two choices, six units or no development, and your answer was yes?
For this application, that's the answer, yes.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's the end of cross-examination. Mr. Schipper, did you say you had one more witness?
I do.
Okay. So just real briefly, remember, at some point, we have to also open up the witnesses to the public. I think from prior ones, you said we're holding that for a bit, because we can't forget about that, though.
We'll forget about it, I will go to keep that in the end of the evaluation, if that's acceptable. And I would say, let's take a, unless anybody else is saying it's a good time for a break, let's take a ten-minute break, and be back here at eight fifty, twelve minutes.
All right, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that Mr. Schipper's can, after his qualifications have decided, and he can ask if any of the attorneys have any objections to the qualifications.
Thank you. Mr. Schipper?
Yes, Mr. Ramisella, thank you for coming this evening. Can you briefly give a little bit of your qualifications to the board?
Yes, I am a state-certified general real estate appraiser in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a certified tax assessor, and I've been in the industry for probably thirty years. And I've been a, I'm an expert witness for the state tax court, various superior courts, and the US Treasury Court.
And are you employed in any other capacity by any municipalities?
Also the tax assessor, the tax lawyer.
And approximately, how many appraisal reports would you prepare during the course of your thirty years?
Thousands, five thousand, yeah.
Have you testified before zoning and planning boards?
I have.
Have you ever testified in Delmar?
I have not previously.
Welcome to Delmar.
Thank you.
I know of a Mr. Ramisella as an expert appraiser.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Mr. Schipper, is that everything? I'd like to know, is he a fashion consultant? Where do you buy those socks? This checking.
I'm hesitant to answer, but I don't think we want to see Mr. DeFalco.
I understand.
But I have one.
If I could just, Mr. Middleton and Rick Brodsky, do you have any questions or comments regarding the qualifications of the witness?
No.
I do not. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Schipper.
Thank you. Mr. Ramisella, I'm going to ask you to succinctly, to your points, describe where task was when retained by myself on behalf of the applicant.
I was asked to consider and provide an opinion of value, or an opinion on the highest invested use and financial feasibility of a subject property, and analyze the impact on value of neighboring properties.
And how do you go about doing that succinctly and craftly?
Well, if it were to do a highest invested use and financial feasibility analysis, we have to start with analyzing the valued property as it currently sits, then estimate the values at the alternative uses. In this case, A was the asown use as a single-family residential lot, and the alternative was as a redevelopment project with condominiums.
Okay. I'm going to ask a few questions and let you run through your analysis, and talk about what you did in each of the categories, and explain your reasons and conclusions regarding feasibility in particular.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, what did you say? I can't hear you.
I just, I need to put an objection on the record. I didn't want to interrupt.
Oh, I'm sorry. An objection about what?
Well, I, the, Mr. Lamisello indicated he's here to testify as to the highest and best use for the subject property, and I don't believe that's relevant, under the municipal land use law, to an application consisting of a series of D and C variances.
Okay.
I think the case will be complete with appraisers coming in to discuss all aspects of existing use, existing value, taxes, alternatives, the project at hand, its ramifications, and also doing a feasibility analysis as to whether, we can't believe, it's so ironic, we're going to finally get to the five versus six. Mr. Brasky is objecting, I understand why he's objecting, but the particular feasibility is really why we're here and what is at issue in this matter? The intensity of the development, the number of units, the density. And if a project is not feasible, it does not get built. And if something is not feasible, and we're going to hear very quickly, I think the definition of feasibility from Mr. Lamisello, you're going to have this unit sitting there as it is, as a 34-rooming house.
And, Mr. Chairman, what I would respectfully suggest is, I thank Mr. Brasky for the objection. We'll let the objection be noted for the record. What I would recommend is that we can move on, and certainly Mr. Brasky's going to have the right and his witnesses to either cross-examine the witness here and/or propose in this series and/or bring their own theories. So, we'll come back to that, but the objection's noted for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lamisello, in light of the hour and our discussion, I'd like you to talk and mention highest and best use and how that definition intertwined through this application, but I also wanted to, predominantly for this board, try to chase, talk about feasibility as a clause to this present.
Well, the viability of any development is that the project must produce enough revenue to account for acquisition of the land, development costs, and there to be a profit at the end. The, so our analysis was to evaluate the property as it currently sits, look at alternative uses, the value would be as a single-family lots, and then to analyze the feasibility of the number of units required in order to make the project viable.
So with that, go through your analysis.
So, the first step was divying the property at a rooming house. And in order to do that, we utilized pre-sales of rooming houses that all took place in Montana County, two in Delmar, one at Bradley Beach. Those sales closed between-
Mr. Lamisello, if I could just interrupt for one sentence, one second. Are you going to be submitting a report of any, I'm just testing on how much I have to write down. Are you submitting a report, Phil?
No, this is a verbal test.
Okay, thank you.
Those sales occurred between June of '16 and one of '18. They reflect, after adjustment, the range of $48,000 to $78,000 per unit.
The unit being the room of the rooming house?
That's correct. The subject property is 34 rooms. We opine $70,000 per room as a market value, which would reflect the indicated value for the subject property as it currently sits as a rooming house of $2,380,000.
$2,380,000?
That's correct.
And you're saying that is the appraised, I'm sorry, you're saying that's the what value?
That is the market value as the property currently sits.
As it is today?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's the white house?
That's correct.
You're saying it's worth 2.1?
2.3 million.
Three and 80,000.
$2,300,000.
Okay.
Cars are worth 2.3.
Thank you.
Correct.
Our next analysis was to analyze the market value of the subject property as zoned. To that end, we utilized pre-sales of single-family residential lots. They occur between December 15 and November of '17. After making adjustments, to reflect the size and irregularities of the subject property, if it was subdivided to two lots, those sales adjust to a market value of $640,000 to $855,000 per site.
I'm sorry, say it again, if subdivided?
The sales reflect, adjusted sale prices reflect $640,000 to $855,000 per site.
And that's two lots?
Correct.
That's correct. So, we opine that you could get two lots, and we opine a site value of $825,000 per lot. The indicated market value of the subject property as a redevelopment for two single-family lots reflects a market value of $1,650,000.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to say that third part again.
The market value of the subject site to be redeveloped as two single-family lots reflects a market value of $1,650,000. In order for a redevelopment to be economically feasible, the underlying land has to be worth more than the site has approved for that use to be feasible to abolish the existing use as two single-family lots. If it does not meet that criteria, therefore, the property would remain as a rooming house.
It's short by approximately $700,000.
That is correct.
What, do you know what the assessed value also, currently as the property sits at?
The assessed value of the subject property is $2,130,600.
$2,130,600.
$600.
Quarter million dollars off your evaluation of it as a rooming house, correct?
That is correct.
Continue, please, in your analysis.
Finally, the last part of our analysis, as far as the development goes, was for redevelopment as a condominium units, or townhouses. We we did in this case, the subject properties under contract for 2.5 million. We then looked at what the finished product condominiums, townhouses, would sell for in order to determine the financial feasibility and highest and best use of the subject property as redeveloped with townhouses. We utilized six sales. These sales were adjusted, those took place between January 17 and July of '18. All these sales were adjusted in comparison to the units that are going to be developed. After making all the appropriate adjustments, the sales reflected a indicated market value of $1,290,000.
A $1,290,000 per unit?
That, that's correct.
That is of six units?
Well, the per-unit value was $1,290,000.
Right, fine to say.
At six units, the indicated market value overall would be $7,740,000.
So you're saying these six units proposed would be worth $7 million?
That's correct.
More than that. The six units proposed would be worth $7 million?
7.7.
And the building as it stands is worth 2.3 million? A little more than that?
That's correct. This is a true, this is a true sale.
This is with the improvement?
Yeah, that's correct.
And each unit is going, your assessment is over $1 million?
That's correct.
Units would be selling are assessed at over $1 million, these six units?
There would be the market value, there would be an excess of-
Where do you buy those socks?
I'm not sure where I got them.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman.
And as, at five units at $1,290,000, the overall market value would be $6,400,000.
At five units?
At five units. So the next step of the process is to estimate the development cost of the overall project to get to financial feasibility. Utilize Marshall and Smith Cost Estimator and actually recognize a cost estimating publication in order to estimate what the development cost of the improvement would be, including demolition and site improvements. Overall, the construction of six units, including site improvements, demolition, and the land acquisition, the total cost of development would be $6,675,000. Or?
For six units?
That's correct.
That includes the land?
That includes the land.
And parking, yeah.
That includes the total acquisition of land and development cost of the site from the-
Six units?
From six units.
So do you have a number of five units? I'm just curious.
I do, we're going to run through it right now, so.
So what is the profit margin that you estimate to build six units on the property and whether you consider that feasible or not feasible approach?
Does the-
Oh, excuse me one second, gentlemen, I'm sorry. Oh, folks, could you please, if I could, if I could ask everybody respectfully quiet so we listen to the application? It confuses things on the way, and the transcribers having trouble here in the testimony. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Schipers.
So the, after the estimated market value of the subject property adds all six units, deducting all the costs associated with development and sales of those units, the profit at the end of the sellout would be $600,243,000 for 8.41% of the overall development cost. Typically, our total profit on projects ranges between 8 and 15%. Therefore, as six units, the development would be financially feasible. Running those same conclusions, at five units, the profit would be $83,535,000 or 1.3%. No developer would acquire the land for 2.5 million, go through the financing and the time of development, and the risk associated with it for a profit of $85,000.
You're saying on five units?
On five units. Therefore, the six-unit development is the minimum number that would justify removal of the current market basis and develop it to a less dense multifamily residential use. Analyzing the impact on the neighboring community or properties, the high, high-density commercial, or actually, high-intensity commercial buildings such as the subject property negatively impacts market value. Where Realtors, as they utilize, it shows being near a high concentration of renters in a single-family area reduces the, or impacts the value on surrounding properties by 13.8%.
How about homeless shelters who are, who are a building or structure that is conceived or known to house, be it Section 8, drug addiction, rehab?
Well, the whole-
What, what detract would in addition that client help?
I have no doubt, I mean, that's not what's, that's not this property, I'm not, I don't see the relevance of that.
I, I think, Mr. Kennedy, the relevance is you have a structure, a blockaded rooming house structure that common sense amongst this board understands what could be in that, that building, and maybe in that building this summer. It could be a cross-section of everyone, but we, this board will know and look at and understand what that building is, and what it can house, and what it does to the surrounding neighborhood. I think the board can interpret the testimony, however, it is, it's easy to fix.
All right, why don't we, we're getting into a little bit of uncharted territory, but again, I'm going to let Mr. Brasky's objection be noted, and prior to our vote, Mr. Middleton and Mr. Schipers and Mr. Brasky and myself are going to have a discussion regarding appraisal value and profit values and the relevance to the zone application. But let the, I would say, let's proceed. But we have noted Mr. Brasky's objection as well.
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy, I have either a question or a comment in that regard, I'm not sure. It's directly towards you, okay? I understand that the financial aspects are not supposed to sway the board's decision when it comes to granting or not granting a variance. Having said that, though, the feasibility of a project is within our purview to be able to assess, so, you know, as long as we keep those two things separated, and this is a conversation about feasibility versus profit and loss or cost, I just want to note that I believe that we can value in terms of feasibility, but not necessarily make decisions based on economics.
And what I would suggest is, after we hear from the cross-examining and the cross-examination of the witnesses, we'll have a greater legal discussion on that.
Okay, fair, yeah.
You're saying our decision should not be rendered based on the cost of usability? That's what you're saying, right?
The economics are not part of-
Relevant to the decision.
Relevant to our decision process, but the detriment or improvement to the community is, and therefore feasibility comes into play. So this is a discussion about feasibility as opposed to profit and loss.
So, you feel everybody on this board's in agreement, well, what do you think?
Well, that's, that's, if you took the training, that's what was, that was what we learned in our training.
I might miss that.
And we're going to, after we hear the testimony and the cross-examination, we're going to have a further legal analysis and discussion on that part. I think that's a fair, fair topic.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Schipers.
Do you have an opinion, Mr. Lamisello, as to whether there would be any negative financial impact to the surrounding properties when proposed?
No, I think the surrounding properties would be impacted positively by the redevelopment of the subject site.
Based upon your training and experience, do you have a percentage that you would strike as what you would anticipate a positive impact to the surrounding area?
Yes, generally, my analysis of similar redevelopments from high-impact, high-density commercial- commercial or residential properties that were redeveloped, the impact of the surrounding properties was approximately fifteen percent increased value.
Residential, not commercial?
Residential, that's right.
Okay.
No further questions, Mr. Lamisello.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Brodsky, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Lamisello. Just a couple of questions, which is worthy of your testimony. Let me just ask you this. You indicated you're an appraiser, correct?
That's correct.
And when you appraise the value of properties, do you take into account what the zoning permits on that property?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Do you ever make any assumption in an appraisal that a property can be developed in derogation of the existing zoning?
Yes, when the assignment is to do that.
When the assignment is to do what?
Is to opine a market value of a site that was owned for and developed for X.
Okay, so your value here, that you're talking about, is assuming that all of the variances that have been requested would be granted in their totality?
That's right.
Okay. Would that be a reasonable assumption in your practice as an appraiser?
Oh, I'm not necessarily opining the market value of the subject property just for that reason, that purpose. I am analyzing the feasibility of redevelopment. And in order to do that, I need to opine market values for the property as it sits. What would be worth, based on the current zoning? And in this case, I would argue to analyze feasibility of this project.
If it were approved?
As part of that, if it were approved.
If it were to be approved. Okay, so your testimony has no relevance as to whether or not the application should be approved? Is that correct?
That's right.
You've mentioned in your testimony a number of, I guess, values that you've come up with based on, I assume, comparable sales?
That's right.
Okay. Can I, can I ask Mr. Chair that if those could be submitted, so we could think of an opportunity to look at it? Not tonight, but just in the future, so I can figure out how he's coming to whatever numbers he's coming to.
Mr. Schaefer, do you have any problem with that?
I don't want to submit things out of context, so I think I have to decide whether I would be submitting his entire body of work or rely upon his testimony.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Kennedy?
I would, I mean, there's been no report, and he did testify as to comps between the times of certain timeframes. I would respectfully suggest that that is relevant, and I think it, I would ask Mr. Schaefer that if he could, if he don't mind, who'd produce those comps, so that we would have it for the record.
All right, and I have the discretion to submit additional relevant information, and I think that those comps are be relevant to those comps in this analysis.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Other than just comps, I had, I'm always mindful of just submitting certain items in space without relevance. So if, if there's certain analysis that he either provided or has recorded with those or explained in those comps, I like to submit that for me.
I think that would be fine.
That would be fine, and then I would just deserve the right to...
Absolutely.
Ask about it, if there's something I don't understand or I think needs clarification.
Fair request, fair answer, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Also, in your analysis, did you, Mr. Lamisello, do you take into account the purchase price of the subject property?
The currently negotiated?
Correct, the, the contract price.
I did that. That's, that was the cost of acquisition of the land, that's correct.
Okay, and would your analysis change if, if, if that purchase price was reduced?
The analysis would, would the land acquisition price would change?
Okay.
Would it, would it... Would have just...
I, I, I just wanted to make sure that that was, was what you were testifying to. You talked about a value of a million two hundred and ninety thousand dollars per unit?
Yes.
And you'll submit the comps on which you, you base that, and it's based on those numbers that you concluded that the only way this project works from a financial perspective is regardless of what it sells for is for a minimum of six units, correct?
I'm gonna try to reform the question. I'll let him answer it, but it was compound question. It was starting analyzing all the different factors.
Break it down.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you read, read that one?
He'll submit the comps, a project based that, and it's based on those numbers that you concluded that the only way this project works, from my financial perspective, regardless of what it sells for, is for a minimum of six units, correct?
Do you understand the question?
Regarding the number of units, yes.
Okay, your answer is yes?
Yeah, even at, even at six units, it's a, it's a wide return.
Okay, and...
As a wide return?
A likely return.
Likely return.
Week.
And in your experience as an appraiser, I know you already said that you do take into account applicable zoning when you value, when you set a value for a piece of property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so how would you go about calculating the value of the subject property if it complied with the zoning?
Is that as a single lot? Are you asking him what is, is appraised value for a single lot, which now...
I'm asking him, I'm asking him to opine as the value of the property if it were to be, be developed in compliance with the applicable zoning.
Well, it's only a single-family lot, correct?
Yeah, in my analysis, I estimate that the building was raised and a variance was granted, you can get two single-family lots. And those single-family lots were worth approximately eight hundred and twenty-five thousand.
A piece.
And that's where the million six fifty came in as the value as zoned.
And do you need any variances to simplify the properties?
There are variance because of the gross area.
Okay.
So we will get two conformable lots without variance.
Okay.
At least likely one will be granted. And the overall value of the underlying land as zoned is a million six fifty, well shy of what would be required to redevelop the subject property.
Now, that's the part I don't understand. When you say well shy of what would be required to develop the property, I don't understand what you mean by that. Could you explain?
Yes, fundamental to any appraisal, you have to start with the highest and best use of the subject property as vacant and as improved. And in, in any assignment, you have to make those two determinations. And the only time it is financially feasible and massively productive, which are pegs of high substance use, that a redevelopment is feasible is when the underlying land at that use exceeds the overall value of the subject property as it currently sits. So until that underlying land becomes valued, the value exceeds two million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a development, or any development that's chosen. If it doesn't exceed that, you would not raise the building, and you continue it at its current use as that is the highest and best use.
And so if the property were not redeveloped, is your testimony that the property would be worth two million three hundred and fifty thousand, that you know?
That's correct.
No further questions?
Mr. Milton?
I have no questions.
Okay. With that, back to you, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, I left a call on a couple of people from the, Michael Long?
Is this another witness? I'm sorry.
It's a witness.
It's a witness for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, is this Mr. Schaefer, is this a professional witness or lay witness?
It's a lay witness, it's the name.
Okay, can you say your name, please?
Michael Long.
And your address?
Two oh one Ocean Avenue in Belmar.
Okay, you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best we know, to help you guide?
Of course, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Long, I'm gonna be relatively brief. I'm gonna present to you what has been marked eight twenty-two, that's what it's called, these markings on the board. I'm gonna represent to you that this was a document that's been previously discussed and addressed this evening. Are you able to locate your property?
Certainly, yes. I'm right here on the corner of Second and Ocean, directly across the street from the proposed project.
All right, if you'd be so kind and large enough letters to read, could you write Long in there?
Also includes the dog and area.
Okay, so why don't we put an arrow there? So, Mr. Long, you own approximately half of the block that...
I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Schaefer, can you show that to Rick? I don't know if Rick saw that. Yeah.
Did we see it?
And then, and then...
Did you see it?
I guess, Mr. Long.
Sure.
Oh, okay, correct.
So, Mr. Long, is it fair for me to conclude that yourself and your wife own half of the oceanfront block between Second and Third, across the street from the White House?
Correct.
And how is your property used? What type of use? Is it a single-family home?
Yes, it is.
And do you have a opinion or desire as to whether you'd like to see the White House raised and this redevelopment be approved?
Yes, we are in favor of the project. We've been living there for about fifteen years, raised our three boys, and we believe that this project will increase the value of our property as well as a townhouse directly on the same, same street, on Second Avenue on the Ocean Block. That's in the estate of my mom, who passed away recently, and we had her condo, it's very similar to the ones that are being proposed here, assessed, and we believe that that assessment will go up if this project is approved. We, we also are heavily invested in Belmar with our property. We, we have four lots in total, and I sometimes joke with people that I built and developed an estate that's not sellable. And, but, but it's our home, and we, we really think that this, this development will help us in the long run with the value of, of what we've invested for our children when they inherit it from us. And there's also concern on our part as to what an unknown possible alternative would be to what we're looking at here, which we, we like it. It's, it's directly outside, across the street from my kitchen window. We'll look at it every day. It doesn't upset us. I know we have different circumstances than some of the other neighbors in the neighborhood, but we, we would really be pleased to see this go through. And we think it would be for the betterment of everyone, not just, not just ourselves. I think in time, it would, it would prove to be a good thing, you know, for our, for our small little neighborhood in the northern part of Belmar, as well as the entire township, the entire borough. So we, we would like to ask you to take into consideration how close we are, how much it will, will impact us, and you'll, you'll hear other people, but we're, we're right there, and we would really like to see it go through.
What abouts you to the west, Mr. Long? What property?
Well, it's a, it's a previously rental property that's now condos, multiple use, a rather, a rather large development, and we, that's another, another factor that we're, we're looking at across the street at six units that will be owned, not rented. And that's always a concern. And, and we also were a little fearful that, you know, we hear talk about a single-family home. I, I don't know if there, if it could be sustained, if there are, you know, many people out there that could afford to, to buy this, you know, White House and build a single-family home similar to ours. We, we hear it all the time, but we, we did it fifteen years ago. It was a different world. And I don't know if there are many people that would want to invest that amount of money in Belmar when they could take it and go up to Spring Lake or across the river to Avon. We still are Belmar. We, 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 you know, have no aspirations of someone putting up something similar right across the street from us.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
Both statements, there is...
They might have a question on your day for you.
Yeah, point of order, Mr. Chair. I don't know what relationship there is between this neighbor and the applicant, if any.
Why doesn't he answer the question?
Well, I, I can answer.
Because what I'm, what I'm, what, just, excuse me, just for a second. It sounds like we've gotten into public portion of comment, and, and as a point of order, this is out of order. I mean, I could start calling up all the people who are in opposition to the application as part of my case, but procedurally, that's not correct.
Mr. Schaefer, would you like to weigh in on why this witness isn't considered part of the testimony?
Yes, he's, he is the direct across-the-street neighbor who is probably as principally affected as, as anyone else.
Folks, please, if we could keep it down. We can't hear up here. The transcriber can't get the notes right. Thank you.
Maybe this person can wait and open their mouth when it's their time to speak instead of interrupting our presentation.
Yeah, if everybody could, could please, we'll get a chance for everybody to speak in this application, I promise. Go ahead, Mr. Schaefer, with your explanation.
I, I submit that Mr. Long is similarly situated as the objector properties as well as he is a directly affected neighbor.
Mr. Schaefer, do you see any justification here? I too am struggling with this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm labeled as a witness, and so what I would suggest is, yeah, I mean, maybe... Are you calling any other witnesses, Mr. Schaefer?
I was gonna call one other, but I'll let him speak in, in general comment.
All right, I mean, maybe that's right.
To avoid the, this issue.
All right, I would, I would prefer that, and I think that's the, the better course and the more cautious approach, and I appreciate that. And I understand Mr. Brodsky's objection, just because it, and again, we want to hear what you have to say, but it just might be more appropriate to hear it in, in the, in the public comment section. Again, I want absolutely to hear what you have to say, and I want you to say it, as I do, as I do every chance. So maybe we can come back to him?
Yeah, so what should we do with Mr. Long's testimony?
I mean, we, we can finish him up. We can just hear, or you want to hear it, I mean...
I, I think we hear it like we can just with the public, and everyone else.
I, I would, I would move that what we heard so far, the board considered part of the public session, just slightly out of sequence.
Good idea. So will Mr. Schaefer, can, will, will Mr. Longie come back later on during the public portion of the...
Sure.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you. Okay, so back to you, Mr. Schaefer.
We rest.
All right, Mr. Brodsky, did you have anything to add if we were moved on?
I, I do have my planner here this evening, but I know Mr. Milton has a planner as well in, for his client, the builder, has also hired a planner. And when we were here last, Mr. Milton had indicated that he was going to present the testimony of a planner. It's unusual. I haven't seen it before. I guess, I don't know, maybe Mr. Kennedy can speak to whether that is duplicative. I mean, I keep getting yelled at for, for asking, going on too long, but I'm not sure why an additional planner in support of the application, how could that testimony be different from the applicant's testimony? how could that testimony be different from the applicant's testimony when it's given on behalf of a woman who happens to be a potential builder, as we heard at the one I said.
I guess I would start first with Mr. Schipers, do you have any objection with the opponent presenting a planner's testimony that may or may not conflict with your planner's testimony?
No, absolutely not, I, he, he is hired by Mr. Middleton, who is representing individuals who wanna see this project ostensibly idle or proved. Um, I think any individual, like the objector, has the right to honor his professionals and present it to this board. And if Mr. Middleton's planner wants to, uh, rebut, bolster whatever his opinion may be after the objector puts on his case, I think that's his, his right to do so.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kennedy, I'm completely confused by the situation.
Okay. And, and, and it's fair to me, uh, it's a, a unique, a very unique situation. And so what we have here is, is a couple of things going on, and, uh, uh, we have to think of how do we handle this, uh, sort of a unique situation, and the things that we would normally focus on would be, how have we done in the past, uh, how have other boards handled, uh, similar situations, and how do the courts deal with it when, when the other boards have, have handled it? And that, it gets to be a little bit of a difficult situation because typically, we don't see a supporter taking a formal role in the proceedings like this. Uh, it's obviously very common for objectors to participate, and objectors to retain lawyers and, and engineers and planners and, and put on witnesses. Not so common for, for supporters to do so, um, and again, uh, it's not uncommon for supporters to maybe come to a board meeting and, and to speak, uh, the thing that they have, and sometimes even with an attorney saying, hey, I have no objection, uh, particularly if they move this gate or if they, uh, move the driveway to the other side of the home, I just wanna put that on the record, but here, um, like I said, it's a unique situation, but Mr. Middleton has been here since the beginning of the first meeting, he did formally enter an appearance, um, and, uh, he did advise that he would be formally participating, so to my knowledge and in my experience, and I have to say, I've sort of done this forever, but again, it's, it's not too common, but can't say it's wrong, uh, it's just not, not too common. So, we are in sort of uncharted territory, so if, if the, if the comment is, hey, I've never seen this before, good thought. And, um, the overriding principles and goals that I do, or I try to, try to do and try to, uh, protect, is A, you know, protect the board process, B, protect the integrity of this public hearing process, and C, ensure a fair public hearing process, and D, uh, write a resolution supporting the board's ultimate action, whether it's approving it or denying. So, again, going to Mr. Chairman like a broken record of what I said before, in the back of my mind, I'm always thinking, if there is an appeal, what is the court, uh, what is the judge gonna say? And, um, I would be, uh, concerned that if we didn't let, uh, Mr. Middleton, Mr. Middleton's, uh, witnesses proceed, uh, and if the application was denied, I imagine the first thing that, that the, those people who are aggrieved by the board's decision would say, hey, uh, you know, and his witness would have changed the whole course of things, so, and that could be a compelling argument. Um, so I think, you know, obviously from an administrative standpoint, if we let Mr. Middleton's, uh, witnesses testify, that argument on appeal presumably goes away, and I wouldn't feel comfortable, um, not letting a party's witness testify. So, I would respectfully suggest that under the circumstances, um, we, we would have to hear it, but again, a caution to all, uh, uh, it's been said to Mr. Schipers, uh, throughout the first part of the public hearing, and it's been said, uh, to Mr. Brodsky during this part of the hearing, and I imagine it might be said to Mr. Middleton in the future, that, uh, we gotta be, you know, sensitive to, um, overloading, um, and duplicative and, and repetitive, uh, testimony. But that having been said, uh, if Mr. Middleton wants to, uh, prepare a planner, I would suggest that we should let him, um, and the question becomes, would we have the objector present or Mr. Middleton, uh, his planner testify first? And I would probably be willing to hear from all attorneys on this, but I would sort of suggest that we're, uh, fear that Mr. Brodsky might say, if he goes now, Mr. Brodsky's witness, and then, uh, Tim Middleton's wi, uh, planner testifies, Rick Brodsky might have to, you know, sort of do that whole reexamination or recross or redirect. I think it might be more efficient, uh, if we let Tim's, uh, professional planner testify first, but I would certainly, uh, like to hear Mr. Schipers' opinion and Mr. Brodsky's opinion and Mr. Middleton's opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, Mr. Schipers, do you have any objection to Mr. Middleton's, uh, planner presenting before, uh, Mr. Brodsky?
Uh, I do, I, I think with the utmost respect for Mr. Kennedy, who has done this probably as long as I, or maybe longer, based upon his age, I think that the objector goes next, the objector can put forward his objection, Mr. Middleton and his planner, who know, may agree with some of the objecting testimony and offer other information. I think it would just potentially sound duplicative to you and the board that Mr. Middleton's planner, uh, say, yes, I agree with what Mr. DeFalco said, or yes, I'm gonna reiterate everything Mr. DeFalco said. I tend to think, um, from a board or judicial economy, you're gonna be better served by hearing from the objector's, uh, planner and then hear Mr. Middleton's planner, and I tend to think that testimony would be more succinct. If, if the occasion is that Mr. Brodsky would have to then have the opportunity, uh, to cross Mr. Middleton's planner, of course, that's any ordinary course, and if he chose to recall his planner to present anti-Milton's winner testimony, that's probably his right subject to this board's desire and breadth of testimony.
All right, so we've asked two attorneys, we've got two different answers. Mr. Brodsky, uh, do you have a preference on which way we go from here? Assuming that we are gonna hear from Mr. Middleton's.
Yeah, assuming we are gonna hear, um, it's certainly, and, and all due respect is to Mr. Schipers, uh, the ordinary course is, the applicant goes, puts on their testimony, uh, and then the objector goes at the end, goes after, goes last. We've got, we've got, um, um, a, a witness here, a proposed witness who's hired by the, uh, potential developer of this, uh, project, if indeed it gets approved, so, you know, I, I, I assume we're gonna hear an alignment of interest, and it is absolutely out of the normal course to have, uh, a expert in favor testify, then have an expert in opposition, then have another expert in favor, I think it's disjointed, I think it's inconsistent with standards and accepted practices, um, of, of planning boards and zoning boards in New Jersey, and I also believe, um, and so there's no question in my mind that, that the next expert witness, uh, to go, or certainly any expert witnesses, any expert planner witnesses that are out here, and who knows, there may be more people in the audience who decide to hire planners in favor of the, of, of the application, and there may be objectors. So, we're in a dangerous slippery slope here when we're talking about, um, repetition, because we could end up having, um, you know, a betty of planners on both sides coming up and testifying the same way. I don't think that's what this board wants, I don't think that's what the municipal and useful provides, and, and I don't believe that it's something that this board should, should, um, consider, but if the board does consider and allow the testimony, it's certainly, there's another planner being hired by a related, um, indivi, individual to the applicant. That planner should go first, we have the opportunity to review that testimony, and then I bring up my planner to respond.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Fallow.
Mr. Kennedy, you, you said two, two great words as it related to the zoning board, approval and deny.
Oh, yes.
And with the breath of fresh air, I ask this question in the interest of time, do you think that this zoning board will be able to vote on this application this evening?
No.
Do you think that everyone in the audience will have a chance to ask their questions this evening?
No.
So, do you think in all likelihood that we're going to be extending this application for another session?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
And, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, if we could just get Tim Middleton's comments on that comment, on, on that, on that thought process, and then I have one quick thing to say, and then we'll just leave it up to the board to take more decisions.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Well, I don't wanna direct the record too, I think, Mr. Brodsky indicated that, uh, my claim is somehow a related party to the applicant. I, I represent several neighbors, Mr. Tarzan has nothing to do with the application, so I think, I think it's unfair to label him as some sort of a related part of this totally up trip. That being said, I, I would agree that normally, the applicant would lead, the objective would then follow. I'm either applicant or objector, I'm a, I'm a supporter, uh, and I represent several neighbors. My planner may testify, you know, or his testimony will be a function of what you heard tonight from Mr. DeFalco, and what he would hear from your planner representing the objector. He may testify two or three minutes, he may testify eight or nine minutes, it, it, but it's gonna be a function of what they said and what their case is about. So, from my perspective, the more prudent approach would be that my planner test, if he testifies after the objectors put their case on. And I would actually reserve my right to call him back after their planner testified, that would be my right as a supporter of the project. I'm, again, I'm either.
Mr. Kennedy, I just, just a question, it, it just, it, on appearance, it, it seems to not have standing relative to the proceeding, and this is an important point, because if you're concerned about an appeal, and we're, we're, we're allowing what appears to be a third party to enter either pro or against testimony, uh, it, it, it is irregular, and it's gonna be up to you to let it proceed or not proceed, or we're gonna have to adjourn until you get an opinion on it. It's getting late anyway, maybe you wanna do that, and just say, we're not sure how to treat Mr. Middleton and his expert properly, so let's adjourn, and when we read, we'll come back with an opinion based on some research, maybe. I, I mean, if it was seven o'clock at night, I would be different, it wasn't that bright, and why would you consider it?
Okay, and if I can just say one thing, and, and, I mean, I, I thank, that, that is excellent, that's just, I just, just.
If everyone could please keep it down?
Thank you. Real, real briefly, 'cause I, I don't wanna have a whole lot of discussions on this, and, and I think the most important part is, and we have to not lose sight of this, is the order of testimony is, is really not going to be that relevant in the grand scheme of things. Uh, you all are very awesome board members, and you're very competent, and you're very skilled, and you're very conscientious, and you're gonna hear a lot of testimony, and you're gonna hear a lot of testimony, there's gonna be a couple more meetings, it, it appears. And, uh, the, the testimony that you heard on the first night is no more important and no less important than the testimony that you're gonna hear on the last night. So, it, it, we have to sort of, it's all relevant, and, and it's all going to be, uh, analyzed and, and, and debated, and, uh, it's all gonna be part of your, uh, basis for approving or denying the application, so I don't wanna get hung up on that. Um, I think, and I say this respectfully, and, and I did do a little bit of legal research, and then, like I said, it's just not a lot of research out there on it because it's sort of a, you know, uh, a, a unique situation, I think it would be a more efficient use, uh, to let the supporting planner testify, uh, because clearly, he's supporting the application, and I think it'll be more, uh, efficient, uh, for Rick Brodsky's, uh, when his objector planner testifies, if he can base those objections based upon the testimony presented, I just think it'll, it'll save time later on, that's my thought, but I certainly defer that to you. I, I just, I, I think, as long as we let everybody speak, and we let everyone speak, and, and have their, their due course, I would just, I think it's more efficient, uh, to let Tim's, uh, supporting planner speak, and then the objecting planner, but I, I, I defer to the board members.
We'll follow your counsel.
Right. So, I, I mean, I would recommend that you just, and I would recommend that you let, you let Tim's, uh, objector, uh, I'm not sorry, Tim's planner speak, and then, again, everyone gets to cross-examine, uh, the witness, and then, and then the objectors, but, you know, that, that would be my opinion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, does anybody have an objection to what Mr. Kennedy is recommending to the board? Okay.
No.
So, from there, I would say, the next thing we're gonna hear is Mr. Middleton's planner's testimony, uh, the, the next question is.
At what time?
Right, 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 get there, Mr. Fallow.
No, at what time?
Hey, Duke is not on.
About how long?
It'll be the World Series by then.
They have to speak to him, I mean, we weren't planning to go tonight, but, uh, we could certainly commence if you want us.
No, uh, it's getting late, and, uh, Mr. Kennedy, unrelated to this application, we had some administrative business to take care of in executive session this morning, or earlier today, postponed it. Can we do that tonight?
Yes.
Or postpone that for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, is there one other thing that, uh, you think Mr. Kennedy wants to talk about, the appraiser, if you could give us some background for that? Is that something you wanna do tonight while?
Yes, um, uh, uh, all right, I, well, right way after what you're gonna say, that excellent point.
All right, so here's, here's what we got tonight, we're gonna end, uh, the application testimony tonight. Mr. Kennedy is gonna speak on the appraiser, uh, at that point, we're gonna pick, uh, the next, announce the next meeting date, uh, then we're gonna adjourn the meeting and go into, I assume, an executive session to wrap that up, if it, depending on how long this takes, or we can just adjourn the meeting and handle the executive session at the beginning of the next.
We can do it at the beginning of the next.
All right, so that's what we'll do.
So, uh, came with that?
Sure. I, I just make one, uh, one point, um, just while we got, uh, Tim Middleton here, um, you, he had referenced who he represents at a prior meeting, and he gave us two names, Kinsel and, and Richard Tarzan, has that, has that changed at all?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so just, uh, Mr. Hodgson, my administrative checklist here is, uh, and these are a couple of things that I, I thought of, uh, along the way. Number one, uh, Mr. Schipers, if you were having transcripts prepared, I, I would, I think, uh, the board protocol is that you send a, um, email, a copy down to, to the board secretary, and the other thing is.
I'm not the one.
Oh, okay. Okay, so if you have the transcripts, if you wouldn't mind, uh, and if they're, uh, prepared, if you have them, send them at least to April, and if you could send them, uh, to the attorneys too, if you have them, if you don't have them, that's another question. And the other thing is, um, anticipating what we sort of talked about earlier, uh, Mr. Schipers, um, what I would ask of you based upon this, uh, the legal issues involved with the, uh, talk about the assessments and the economic feasibility and profit is at highest of best use, and, and, and Mr. Brodsky's, uh, objections, uh, what I would ask, if, if you wouldn't mind preparing, um, uh, a fairly brief, uh, legal brief, just the legal justification for the, the, uh, considerations that a board can consider in the context of that, and I would also, uh, obviously, if you would, uh, give, uh, ten copies to the board secretary and the attorneys, and then if Mr. Middleton or Mr. Brodsky wanted to, uh, respond, they could, so that would be number, uh, one. And then the other thing is, uh, Mr. Schipers, when, uh, convenient, uh, if you could submit those comples and the other documentation that you wanted to suggest, uh, to submit, I would ask that you get ten copies to the board secretary, so she can give them to us, the board members, I think that would be a more efficient use of time, and if you wouldn't mind sending one to me, one to Mr. Brodsky, and then one to Tim Middleton, um, so.
May I? Sure. I don't have an objection at all to doing a brief brief as you request, although, um, from an issue of fairness, if one is gonna be submitted by either Mr. Brodsky or Mr. Middleton, I think there should be a date for me to submit mine.
Excellent point.
I can have it at the board cap, I don't wanna be in a position to take them in on a day of, and say, by the way, here's our positions, you get to, I got to speak first, but.
Excellent point. What I would suggest is, you know, if, if, and I'm just making the numbers up, uh, ten days for the next hearing, you, you submit your, and if Tim and, uh, Rick had, uh, a supplemental brief that they wanted to do, um, they would get it in four days before, does that sound fair?
Sounds fair to me.
Okay. And, um, and then we'll, we'll get to the, to the, to the board, 'cause there's some legal issues involved in that. And so I guess now, Mr. Chairman, it comes to the, the next hearing date.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, last time, I wrote a letter with due respect, April, uh, Ms. Quodno, at the board.
It was Mr. Kennedy's suggestion, uh, with your response being terrific. Let's do it in February, work our way through February, potentially schedule a special session in March so we could finally conclude this. So I want to reiterate and remind of that conversation in December. My client is in favor of that, doing the day first special session in March, or, I'm sorry, yes, in March. So we can try to move this through conclusion. This way, both planners will know that particular day, and we'll be able to get through the public note, and, uh, I would think three to four rounds, this application should be ready for a best.
We already have a special session in March, correct? Correct on the fourteenth?
April, did you, uh, have a date of the fourteenth?
Yeah, fourteenth, fourteen.
Okay, so, so we've already picked that special meeting date. However, we just gave, uh, Mr. Shipers a ten, ten-day deadline, a ten-day advance deadline to finish his appraisal before. So now you got what you wish for.
Also, Mr. Kennedy. I have a conflict on the fourteenth. As do I.
As do I.
As do I. As does my planner.
I'm good.
And also, just for, for those of you who are keeping score at home, I, I believe April said that the April agenda, just for the, the regular meeting, is totally open?
Yeah. Yeah. April twenty-fifth.
How about our March again?
That, that one's already filled.
I'm sorry, it's been filled as well. All right, and we don't have another date for a special meeting in March, correct?
No, we don't.
Because of the availability of the applicants, the building use, and things like that? All right, so it's the, either the fourteenth, or it's like we're pushing this off to some time to be...
Twenty-fifth, Mr. Chair.
Well, March fourteenth is still our request, but we're under pressure also. I mean, it, 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 it's not, um, there's a lot of new requests, there's a seller, so concerning, there's a lot of things going on here.
Sure, and you know, like, could I, um...
And to the potential, no one's fault, to the potential, you know, into the future jeopardizes the viability.
I understand. Mr. Kennedy, how do you weigh this?
Sure, I, I, I mean, obviously, we wanna be, uh, fair, and we wanna be as equitable as possible. A lot of the people seem to have, uh, problems for the, the fourteenth.
Ken, let me just, so, the April twenty-fifth, someone threw that out. It's, it's both, uh, my planner and I are both new.
Okay, and, um...
And there's nothing on, on the scheduled date of twenty-fifth? From March, for both, other than the fourteenth that we're scheduling to them, but just conflict with...
And, and let's, let's just do a quick, uh, so Bill Shipers, you're, you're done. Uh, Tim Middleton, you have, is it just gonna be one, one, uh, witness you have?
Right.
Okay, and that's your planner, and, and I don't, you don't, from what you said earlier, doesn't think it's...
Well, you can ask, I need a moment to confer with Mr. Merkler, uh, the principal of the applicant.
Could I ask that, uh, Mr. Kennedy, while we're talking about this, uh, have the applicants in March already noticed? Is it possible to be a clock with the two?
For what?
We would hear this, a wakehouse application on the regular meeting, and still both the special meeting will take on three applications, and you're...
The only problem with that is they may not notice. However, I hope that, they hope that that line, four, one day, that they, they, they're the part that's noticed, and that, and that line.
I understand, thank you.
Well, the fourteenth is a special meeting.
No. Both were, were, it's not determined yet, we're just trying to figure that out.
Fourteenth, not determined, but the standard meeting is the eight.
The twenty-eighth, not being included.
And we're, we're free, not...
Uh, March, not being included. No, it's, it's not, March, obviously.
All right, so, Mr. Soffman, I'm gonna see you any, anytime again, anytime soon.
I hope so.
What's that?
I hope so.
All right, bro, come on, will you be here the next session, or is that necessary? You probably got eight pairs of sunglasses.
Yep.
Okay, something determined, other than that you're on the clock, they're taking that one. Make that table, bro. So, um, I just wanna make sure I understand how this is, so... They'll be notified, but, did that get noticed again, or are we gonna do it over here?
No, I mean, Mr. Shipers is out speaking with his client. I'm assuming that they're gonna ask not to be renoticed, uh, which would be the standard, so that's why I want the public to stay here just for a couple more minutes, so we can, um...
All right, then from a protocol standpoint, hypothetically, Middleton speaks with his planner, objector attorney speaks with his planner.
And Rick, do you just have a vote, planner?
Okay.
There's no other witnesses?
All right, then the audience comes forward with questions?
And comments.
Which we haven't made yet.
And board comments and bill of orders, correct?
We have, no, I know. We get a lot of comments from that side of the bench.
Sure, but there are comments, and then we're gonna ask questions, and then comment?
We'll go through our regular, we'll put out some public comments, then we get our...
Sounds like we'll put out some public comments.
No, we'll, we'll do our questions first, then public comments.
Is that right, Mr. Kennedy?
Sorry, I didn't...
Statistically, I think there is a depression that after the two attorneys talk, they talk, the witnesses talk.
You mean the public?
I mean, public.
No.
Two attorneys, planners, and then us, or the public comes up to ask a question?
And then the public, and then the attorney.
They follow us.
Word questions, then public.
That's what I thought.
That's, that's what's gonna happen?
Okay, all right.
You get, you already got, getting your questions in?
I, I, I have no questions to say.
All right, well, we see Mr. Shipers back in, so let's see what we can do.
I apologize for, for leaving, but I appreciate the indulgence. Mr. Merkler's, uh, uh, he has, um, arranged, for the March special session that we talked about in the December meeting. His position is that if Mr. Kusuba is not available to Mr. Middleton, Mr. Middleton has to make a decision whether he uses Mr. Kusuba or another planner. Mr. Merkler, with due respect, Mr. Bro- uh, Brodsky, uh, there's been a lot of scheduling issues. We all talked about it in December, we talked about the fall over into March to blow it out in the special session. Uh, Mr. Merkler would like that date. It jeopardizes his contract if it goes forward. I don't see any feasible reason why it can happen. The date apparently has been reserved, as you said. If, there's nothing on that date.
What date?
He knew in advance.
March fourteen, we're talking about.
We knew in advance in December that there was gonna be a plan for a March date. And now we're talking about, at earliest two months from now, and the paper. Does not, this don't work for Mr. Merkler.
Thank you, Mr. Shipers. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, I'm a little stuck here. I do actually...
I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm a little, uh, stuck here. I, I, I do seem to side with the applicant that this, you know, we're all trying to schedule this, and if we wait for everybody to be compliant on open dates, it's gonna be very tough to hear this application.
Why don't we just walk through March? I mean, we, we're killing the fourteen, but let's, let's walk through, what, starting with, you know, March ten to eleven? And, and then let's just see where we wind up at everyone's request. I, I mean, there's no magic that's gonna live a week, it's very cruel. I mean, I understand the room is sometimes cruel, but it's not for definitely...
No, but the other issue is, is when, is Kevin available also?
What's your schedule?
It's scheduled.
Yeah, I just, I don't have it. Uh, sorry, I mean, we'll, we'll, I won't be the issue, we'll, we'll figure that out. Uh, it's tough, I mean, and in fairness, I think we all, sort of, April was good enough to get, uh, potential meeting dates for us, hope we didn't, uh, consult the, the, uh, the mass, uh, of, uh, the involved parties. And I, I do understand, I, I certainly understand the issues in Merkler's, uh, time constraints, and I understand the objector's time constraint. I, I think it would be, you know, and I, I would, you know, with all due respect to everybody's, I, I think it would be, tough to, to have the hearings without, you know, um, Mr. Brodsky or Mr. Brodsky's, uh, planner. I mean, they have, in fairness, come here three nights so far, um, so, I mean, it's, it, like I said, we're, we're gonna make someone unhappy along the way, and it's, scheduling is, is, is tough. And, you know, that, the, that's the downside of, you know, the, the lengthy hearings, is that, you know, we get carried on. So, um, I mean, uh, just, just why I have it, we, we have a room, a possible special date is March fourteenth. Um, but, uh, Mr. Kusuba, you're not available, and Rick Brodsky, you're not available.
I'm not, and my planner is not.
Planner's not. So I think that's, you know...
If I could, Mr. Kennedy, I mean, if need be, I'd have to, I mean, get another planner, but, uh, if the applicant wants to move with the fourteenth, on the fourteenth, I have no objection.
All right, uh, before we make any decisions here, Mr. Kennedy, April, could we walk through March? Are there, excuse me, we, we have to wait for the last one. I'm sorry, please. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Is it possible to walk through the March dates, or March fourteenth is it, or no?
Sure, sure, I, I don't, I mean, I'll deal with myself later, later on, but, you know, and I just don't know. But you can walk through your, see if you can get other dates yourself, yeah.
Okay, I mean, can we do that tonight? Is that feasible, April?
Sure, and, and I think it's hard, but, yeah.
Well, regular meeting's the twenty-eighth.
Okay. And what, what is on that night, April?
There's three applications.
Okay.
I mean, I can check to see if the room's available on the twentieth or twenty-first.
So you're looking at the twentieth or the twenty-first, uh, the exception of Mr. Hutchinson? Any thoughts on that as a first, uh, look, Mr. Kennedy?
Twentieth is a Wednesday, and twenty-first is Thursday.
Yeah, I mean, I, I...
Is that right? No, twenty, twenty-first is Thursday, that's right. You don't know, but you...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, I just don't know, so I'll just figure something else. So figure, you know, out if, if it's okay with you and everybody else.
Okay, uh, so, with, uh, Mr. Brodsky, you're jumping up, you're asking, talk?
Sorry, sorry, well, no, but, um, I just have a conflict. I have, I, I'm on my feet in Middletown on the twentieth, and it has been on the twenty-first.
Um, Mr. Lisk, if I have a schedule problem, I'll bring my partner, who said, I think Mr. Brodsky, if I'm a large firm, that a lot of people would do what he does, I don't want Mr. Merkler to be held hostage to Mr. Brodsky's...
I'm not asking anyone to be held hostage. It's not fair to impose a date that's a special meeting without consulting objectors who've spent a lot of time and money coming to these hearings. We have said we're available at the board's regular meeting date, and we're perfectly amenable to discussing a special meeting, but we can't agree that it has a special meeting when we're not, when we can't physically be there. It's just not fair.
All right, well, my client should not be subject to Mr. Brodsky looking at a book and saying, "I'm not available." I don't know what he's doing, why he's gonna, I give him the utmost respect that it's legitimate on his feet doing something. But, uh, you need to schedule this, I think, Mr. Chairman, and we need to get it done.
Could, could we back up to March, so like, thirteen, or eighteen, or nineteen, like, could we back up to March?
Uh, the nineteenth, nineteenth and nineteenth are out. Um, I had checked for the first two weeks, um, for Mr. Kennedy's schedule, and now the fourteenth was the one that he was available for.
We check eleven, twelve, thirteen, and any objections to eleven, twelve, or thirteen? We'll take all three dates.
Uh, the twelfth we cannot do.
Fourteenth.
What day of the week is that? We're good.
Thirteen? My planner is unavailable on the first of, of March.
So I, I would just, I'll, I'll, I'll work something out one, one way or the other. I'll get a replacement here, or I'll get a replacement from another place, if, if I have a conflict. So I'll say, just take me out of the equation, so work amongst yourselves, and then, and then these, the, the others.
All right, so, so we're just waiting for, uh, April to give us some, any, any dates that are open in March, if you can.
So you still want to do thirteen, for any...
Thirteen is out.
Thirteen is out?
Maybe we should hear what date the planner, for Mr. Brodsky is available, if he had suggested.
You know what, let me ask specifically.
We're already meeting on the twenty-eighth. If you wanted to have two meetings a week, then twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh.
And what about the thirty, thirty-first? Is that, could then might be a fifth?
Saturday and Sunday.
Oh, oh, that one.
All right, um, Mr. Brodsky, do you have any problems on the week of the twenty-fifth?
I'm sorry?
Are you and your player available any days the week of the twenty-fifth?
Of, of March.
I'm, 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 this is Peter's deck, the, the, the objector's planner. I'm available on the twenty-sixth is the only date, which is Tuesday of March that week.
Uh, Mr. Brodsky, are you available that day?
No.
Available on the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth?
Mr. Lisk, I, I heard something about losing board members. I mean, a seven, seven-member board, I'm not looking for a date where I...
We have two alternates, so I wasn't assuming you'd have less than a full board.
You're sure of that?
I'm not sure of that, no.
Not much you're sure of, especially after three nights already, or whatever, or, or, or four.
I think we're really up against a wall here, trying to find a date that's gonna work.
I know.
Here, here's what I think we should do. I, I agree that, uh, it would have been nice to get this done in March. I, I apologize, Mr. Merkler, that we did not communicate this information of the special meeting date to the objector. Given that it was us that had planned this meeting and didn't inform the objector, uh, what I think we should do is reschedule this meeting for the next available date. Uh, we talk about another special meeting, uh, maybe in our March regular meeting, and can we announce that special meeting for April, and give Mr. Merkler a date before the April regular without having to renotice, or is that too complicated?
If, uh, we have to give, uh, if we don't give a date certain tonight, um, we'll have to renotice.
All right, so then, I think we're left with that choice. We either pick the date of April twenty, April twenty-fifth tonight, or we're looking at possible renois, with a possible special meeting.
We have to renotice before that, so we're testing that on the date, whether we're using that. We have, uh, after we know that we've, we've noted. I don't, I don't understand what's wrong with the procedure that if you was, with the March twenty-eighth date, despite our client, his property or his representative, it would be here, and he could tell someone the special date would be for public, anyone interested to come by, March twenty-eighth, and find that new date.
Can we put that on the agenda, just to announce a new date, and there's no other testimony?
Cases, cases, get adjourned, all defined that way, for this, and every other board.
Mr. Shipers is... Mr. Shipers is correct, 100%. The only issue is, though, if there's a unilateral date set...
We're going to pick the date before that meeting, and you will be involved in that decision.
Got it, got it, got it.
I, well, I shouldn't speak for it.
No, excellent, excellent. So what we're going to do is, we're going to carry this to March 28th, 2019, without the need for any further public notice.
Do you have all the involved parties here? We can't do a meeting? Try your best, everybody, a party, a day, a day, I don't care what the day is. Well, that's the, but if we, if we break, everybody, right, how's she going to...
It's a trial.
Everybody's out. We're fishing. You got too many people, that, that was a...
They run up time for the notice.
That's what you said. If you're not here the 28th, that wins back.
May we call her fourth?
April 3rd or 4th? Any objections? It's April 3rd or 4th?
What, what are those dates?
Wednesday, Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Mr. DeValter had a, a great idea, not that we need more, but he said, if we're thinking two days, could the second date be a backup, so we finish it two consecutive days? Hopefully, we're done in one, but if we need to go over.
Mr. Shipers?
Uh, yeah.
It could be done in one day.
Four springs eternal.
April 3rd or 4th? No. Uh, you, you're available, everyone's keen off of your availability, so why don't you tell us the dates you want to have the meeting, and then we'll compare our schedules to yours? How does that sound? Because you're, you seem to be the person who's not available.
Are you speaking to me?
Yes, what day would you like to have the meeting, sorry?
What, what dates do you want me to start telling you? Starting what, what time would you like me to...
Starting April 2nd.
Okay, I'm available April 2nd, I'm available April 8th and 10th, I'm available April 16th, 17th, 18th, 24th...
So that's enough. So that's a delight, isn't it?
24th to 25th.
So, you got April 2nd?
Will you do the 8th or 10th?
Do we have the full complement of the board on that day?
The 8th is a Monday, and the 10th would be Wednesday.
Is the 2nd available?
Mr. Brodsky, are you available on the 10th before we go?
Mr. Merkler's requesting the 2nd, April 2nd.
2nd slot available.
It is what?
2nd slot available.
Not available.
We're both available on the 10th.
Okay. Mr. Shipers, you're available on the 10th?
I'll make myself available.
Mr. Kennedy, you'll make that work one way or the other?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody on the board not here on the 10th, that you know of?
No, I'm here. Um, Mr. Middleton's here on the 10th?
I'll make myself available.
Thank you. All right, so that, that means to me, we can schedule this for the 10th. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes. 7 o'clock PM.
And so, Ken, we go back into those submission dates, and what was it, 10 days prior and four days prior?
Yes, and, 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 Mr. Shipers, that would be your brief brief, as well as your comparable same time.
All right, so then I'll do April 1, and they're do April 6.
Sure. So, Mr. Chairman, what we're going to do is, we're going to carry this application to April 10, 2019, at 7 o'clock PM, with no further special, with no further notice. So, Mr. Shipers, do you, on behalf of your client, consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has to act?
Yes.
Okay, and so ladies and gentlemen, public, I appreciate your patience. You're not going to have another notice, but you're going to come back, or please come back, April 10, 2019, and, as chairman, in conjunction with this motions, you're going to have the authorization of us to have the special meeting.